Glad to have you here, Gary. I know we have Kenny's on the agenda a little later. I guess I'll turn this over then to Councilwoman Hart. Councilwoman Hart, and you've got some exciting presentation ahead of us.
We do. We have the winner of our essay contest. Her name is Catherine Hills. She is a 4th grader at St. Joe with her is her mother Ronnie, her older brother and her grandmother. And then sitting behind her is her teacher Amanda Bradley and her daughter. So at this time, I guess we could invite Catherine up to read her essay to us.
Would you like to come forward, Catherine?
Being a Good Community Citizen by Catherine Hills. Being a good community citizen consists of many things. Some, like not littering, are small deeds, but others are bigger. These include voting and participating in town gatherings. A good citizen is also expected to follow community laws. In this essay, you will read about all of this so you can become a better community citizen. Some people think their single vote doesn't matter, but it really does. If you decide that your vote counts, then it will add up. Many men and women fought for us to be able to vote, so you should accept that privilege and participate in elections. Participating in town gatherings builds trust between you and your fellow citizens, gives you an opportunity to state your opinion and keeps you updated about what is going on in your community. It also gives officials an insight on the public's view of community issues. Another way you can help out in your community is by not littering. This keeps all the land, water and air clean. Many animals are attracted to areas with litter. They find dirty and old food in that litter and they then pick up the germs from it, leading to diseases that can make humans very sick. You can also help form community clubs that help bring parts by picking up trash and putting up no littering signs on community property to keep them peaceful and nice to be in. Your community is your home and, like your house, you must keep it clean and nourished. One of the most important things you can do to be a good community citizen is to support and respect all officials, first responders and all community council members, and most of all, your peers. All of this builds trust and friendships. Here are some basic responsibilities of a good community member. Stay informed of community issues, participate in your community, respect all local laws and vote. If you do all of these things you have just read about, you will surely be an excellent community citizen.
Catherine, it's, I guess, pretty obvious why you brought it. Tremendous essay that was. Can we ask you a few questions, maybe, so we can find out a little bit more about you? Like, where do you go to school, what grade are you in, how old are you and so forth?
Yes.
Would you mind telling the crowd?
I'm nine years old and I go to St. Joseph's School.
Has she been helping you learn how to write better and use English and so forth?
Yes.
We're a little proud of you. I think it goes without saying, we need to get a copy of this because we're gonna have to put it on our website for the city. And I'm sure the media's gonna publicize this because that is a fantastic message. If more people would hear the things you just talked about, we would have a great, much better community and a lot more people helping in our communities. So that's a wonderful message. So on behalf of the city, I'm gonna present to you this trophy for winning our essay contest. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilwoman Hart for this idea she brought to me and she took the ball around with it. It's really a great... Do you have any more to share with how many people participated?
I do. We had 62 essays from Foster Heights, St. Joe and Markstown Elementary. So I thought that was a really good response. We had two honorable mentions. One was from Elizabeth Hatton. She was a Foster Heights 5th grader. And the other one was also Foster Heights 5th grader. Her name was, or his name, I'm not sure, is Trent Tharp. And I'd like, again, to thank Randy for helping me judge those. You wanna add anything?
No. One of the things that I thought that was good about Catherine's was that it touched on so many things, but especially on voting and civic participation and being part of the community and that sort of thing. And I thought it was worth it.
And almost all of the essays addressed littering and recycling. So that was interesting. So kids at that age, it's on their mind.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hart. Thank you, Randy. To your point, Catherine, about these elections and voting, it is important because in my memory here locally, we've had some elections by a margin of only seven votes. A person getting seated on the council. I know we've had some fiscal report elections that were like 50 or 52 separated winner. So those, one vote does count, very much so. So that was a great message that you had for us this evening. Thank you again and thank all of your family for being here with us. And your teacher shows a lot of support and that's why you're coming up right in this community.
She might be up here pretty soon.
That's right. Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on Kenny Fogel, who's the president of the Rotary Club. He's gonna invite us to an event and talk about this upcoming event.
Yeah, I sit right here. Like I said, I'm Kenny Fogel, Marston Rotary Club. I wanted to invite Catherine to join the Rotary Club today. We could use more liquor. So, well, the main thing is, I appreciate y'all allowing me to be here tonight. Marston Rotary Club's had a couple of really good years of fundraising. I just wanna make that clear. We've had a couple of years of raising a lot of money and we give away a lot of money. That's the beautiful thing about the Marston Rotary Club that I really like about it is the money we get in is generally just passed through. It goes on to something else. But every year, we try to have something really special to do. A couple of years ago, we gave a part of the money at the Stephen Foster store when the amphitheater was the first got in trouble. And the last two years, we've given a lot of money to the Flajay Cancer Center. And this year, may as well do that as well. But for the last year or so, we've been discussing, what can we do to have the biggest impact on Marston and Nelson County? And I think just about all of y'all agree because you're involved with it just about as much as anybody there is. But it's the drug and opioid abuse and addiction that's affecting everything. It's overcrowding our jails. It's overrunning our EMS. It's doing just about crime rates obviously going up because of drug abuse, drug use, drug... And we use the word addiction because a lot of times it's not criminal. It's simply an addiction. But we didn't know exactly what we could do. I mean, as a Rotary Club, we're not just, it's not something we can just jump out and do. But we could use a little bit of money. And so we decided to spend some money. So the perfect storm sort of come together about this last year when we were talking about it is Betty Hart, councilwoman now, was running for office. And that was her platform is running for work on opioid and drug addiction. And about that time, I ran into a young lady named Tammy Gibson, who's starting a place called Recovery, Hope for Recovery.
United.
United for Recovery. I get that. But again, you know, she had a great idea and a great organization. So, you know, it's wonderful. Now we've got a platform. We got some money. We got a councilwoman. We got a person that's putting together a really good organization that the city council is behind. So now, as I said, the perfect storm was coming together. So we decided, what can we do? So our first step is on October 23rd, and many of you may have already gotten an invitation to this, is the Rotary Club is gonna host a luncheon on October 23rd at the KFC Hall, now the Marston Event Center. It'll last about an hour and a half, a little luncheon. Where I bring together the movers and shakers of city government, county government and several other people that are involved with this as well. Doctors and police departments and fire chiefs and EMS and anybody that we think that can fit in that room without overcrowding, without getting the fire marshal on us. So we're gonna have, like I said, October 23rd at noon. Betty secured us a speaker. Those are the things we talked about early on. Chief Tom Wyman, I believe, is a police chief from, can't remember the town in Ohio.
Newtown.
Newtown, Ohio. He's been traveling all over the country. Matter of fact, testified before Congress. So he's probably one of the most renowned speakers that we could find. So he's coming down to be our speaker for that day. And our hope out of this is something comes out of it. If nothing else, we all just get together and have a good lunch and talk about our problems. But if the best that could come out of it, obviously, is maybe a task force can get together. Or maybe we can bounce an idea off to each other. I saw a thing on 60 Minutes a couple of months ago. It was a great idea where you have somebody as sort of a point person in this county. Tammy Gibson would be a great point person, but obviously, she right now, she's only part-time and surviving on donations. So it's tough. So again, that's what the luncheon's all about. That's what the invitation's about. That's why I'm here tonight to formally invite you to the luncheon. And again, October 23rd, high noon at the KFC Hall over in North Fourth Street. And if you can be there, we'd love to have you there. We're gonna invite as many people as we can fit in the room, as I said. Think it'll make a difference. Again, Rotary Club has got a lot of projects going on. We're also got a clothing kid project. I'll throw that little plug in on that. So if anybody knows of any brand new clothes they wanna donate to the Rotary Club in these stores, feel free. We've got Raffael Webster Number Three is chairing that one. So I've got him. He's working pretty hard. So again, Rotary Club is, we've got about six or seven little projects going on right now. This is the biggest one. So again, that's one I wanna involve the community more so. Consider yourself invited. Thank you, Betty, for doing what you're doing on this.
Thank you, Kenny. I know you're all happy this month. The last month or two, your busiest months with Urban Festival and the market at the Crafts Festival. You just had your kids' day here on the front lawn of the city hall.
We're taking November off.
So you have been very busy. And now hosting this luncheon is another great thing. Really, something that we definitely all need to take part in if we can. I plan to be there. I know several of the council members will be in our staff. So thank you all. Betty, thank you for getting hold of the chief up there in Ohio and getting that moving. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Switching gears now, going into some bids and change orders. Jessica, would you talk about this change order on Town Creek?
Yes, this is a project at the Town Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant where we are upsizing the main line going through the facility from a 24-inch to a 36-inch line. In the same geographic space, we have not only that line, but also two force mains that run parallel. In the course of the contractor relaying this line, it was brought to our attention that there's an existing 10-inch line that is laying almost exactly over top of the line we're needing to replace. Meaning we can't interrupt service and just move, we have to move that over, that line over in order to continue laying this new line that allows us to treat the waste stream. We looked at different options if we could just add additional bins to try to move away from it. But the lead time on that option was 12 to 14 weeks, which was gonna drastically put our contractor at his complete standstill and prevent us from finishing the project on a timely basis. So this was the option that we looked at, which was just relaying that 10-inch and then reconnecting it and getting it out of our way. I wish we could have these things all identified and known when you get started, but we did, we knew the line was adjacent, but we just didn't know that it was directly in the way in this portion. The contractor did provide a cost estimate to perform the work and an estimated hours. We have looked at our past bids and material costs and these, this price of $27,229 is a very reasonable price. If we were gonna order the materials from our supplier, it was gonna be that same price. So I would like to ask the council to consider approving this change order so that we can continue moving forward and get this project complete. As far as a budgetary item, this amount is covered. We still have money within our contingency, within our overall construction budget to cover this type of cost.
Do you have any questions, Jessica? Don't get confused with this one as up the line, part of the pump station. We just talked about that last week. This is the plant itself. Two different accidents. So part of the overall job is two actually different projects.
Two different contractors.
There's no other question than Jessica that I would ask for motion then to approve her recommendation for this change order number two of $27,229 for the relocation of the line to keep the project going on a timely basis. So I think I have three of them.
We're excited about this.
I think Coach Rod...
Go ahead.
Most of Coach Williams has had a second. Second by Councilwoman Dunn. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion is carried.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. Do you wanna let the guests know they don't have to stay with the terminal?
Well, that's true. Unless you're trying to get married. I asked for a Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. You all are...
You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Don't feel like you're...
It was a civil service essay, though. It is true. But you don't have to stay.
Okay. We probably not gonna be here real long tonight anyway. We'll start spending some more money though right now. All right, we have some bids on our water tank projects. So Jessica, talk about the Withrow Court Tank bids.
Yes, we advertised for doing maintenance and painting of three water tanks within our water distribution system. I may just go through them individually real quick and then if there's any specific questions. It was the Withrow Court Tank, a small tank in Harding County and the water tank in the Nelson County Industrial Park there alongside the Bluegrass Parkway. The bids came in. We actually had, for the two larger tanks, three contractors submit bids. Two of them were actually very close. So I feel this was a very competitive bid that we were able to obtain. And the low bidder, the low contractor, was Currents Construction Services LLC for all three tanks. We do have history of, they actually just completed the Fairground Village Tank there on Louisville Road. They're kind of across from the Five Star. They did a very good job, completed the project within the project timeline and really, really good folks to work with. So they were, I'm recommending awarding these bids to Currents Construction. They're even able to work with us on timeline and are able to get one tank performed, complete or done this fall, which was our goal, to at least get one of these done this fall. So if there's any specific questions about any of the tanks, I would entertain those at this time.
What would the scope of their work be?
The scope of the work includes, we will, the city will take care of emptying the tank. The contractor will then come in and clean, sandblast, remove the existing paint coating surfaces, apply any, I'm gonna rephrase this in any tongue time. Make any repairs to any metal works that need to be welded, repaired, pitting, smooth any surfaces, apply primers. If there's any upgrades to safety equipment or access, you know, from a safety standpoint, lighters, they will make those repairs. Make sure that all of the screens for, that keep birds and insects out of that tank are in good repair and make any improvements to that. And then they apply the coating systems that are accordance with national coating standards and the specifications. We will have a third-party company, Mid-South Tank Consultants, doing critical phase inspections to make sure that the coating systems that we're getting on there are being inspected at each phase of the project. So once they get everything sandblasted, they'll take a look at everything and inspect all the wells that they do, the primers, any epoxy that needs to be done and then each base coat, intermediate and final coat layers. So those will be inspected at all the critical phases as well and make sure that we get a good quality project. And we usually get, we get a report at the end of each project from that third-party inspection. And they have them come back if there's any issues that they see something's a little out of spec. They come back and make those repairs. So that's essentially what the project's gonna entail. And the finished job will look similar to the one on Louisville Road. We're gonna have a high-quality, higher gloss paint on the tanks. Won't necessarily be the same exact logo, but we are trying to go with a product that's going to provide a long, create longevity for the life of that tank.
But back in totally, is this work inside of the tanks that has to be done? Or is that part of what you just discussed?
It's part of that. So these bids include interior and exterior coatings. So the inside will be completely cleaned, sandblasted, make any repairs necessary and filled and any pits, all that stuff will be taken care of. And the same coatings will go. And there's a slightly different coating that's recommended on the inside of the tank versus the exterior of the tank. And all of that's outlined in the specifications. But it is, it's not just an outside painting. It's inside and the outside.
Are we approving, Jessica, the alternate bid totals on all three of those? Or it's just the base bid that we're approving?
We would be approving the base bid for the Nelson County Industrial Park Tank. The alternative bid, we won't know if we're going to need to utilize that alternate bid until we get the initial blasting done. It's truly a matter of, once we start getting that tank prepped, whether or not we need to do a full sandblast or if just a sweep blast is sufficient. And it's depending on how that coating system is adhered. You know, how well that is, existing coating is adhered.
And even if that does take place, we're still...
We have, right, we have a price to accommodate that without coming back and having to establish what that would be.
Thank you.
I'd like to give a little bit of background. Normally, we wouldn't be addressing this many tanks in one fiscal year, but the Withrow Court Tank, we had been in negotiation and even resulted in a lawsuit with T-Mobile and PowerTel, which we've been trying to get them off the tank for two years for this maintenance, which is part of the lease agreement. And I don't have time to explain all what we've been doing for two years with them. But finally, last week, we were able to finally negotiate with their attorneys to get that, to get their equipment off the tank by November 7th. And we're gonna provide them with a place, you know, obviously for them, one problem would be if you take their, you're putting off the tanks how they provide service in the interim. So we are gonna provide space for them to put up temporary service right there at the tank. And then they're making arrangements to relocate on another tower, not ours. So we finally brought that, that's just, we submitted the agreement to the judge, I guess, last Friday at a hearing. And both parties agreed to the terms of this settlement. So finally, after two years, we're gonna get them off the tank so we can do this work. And that was one reason why we also got the Fairgrounds Tank off Louisville Road up in good shape because when we take that tank down, we'll move that water over for as much of it as we can. That's a pretty big tank. It's big and gallon. I don't know how big Fairgrounds is.
Fairgrounds Tank is 500,000 gallons. Nelson County Industrial Park is 750,000 gallons. And Withrow Court Tank is a million gallon tank. So unfortunately, we do need to make sure that we provide enough stored water throughout the community to meet our needs. So we can't take either of the big tanks out and do maintenance at the same time. So we wanna make sure that we put smaller tanks back in service within those pressure zones and those tanks aren't even in the same service areas. But we'll make sure that the community water needs are being met in the interim while that maintenance is being done. But it has been a long road. And normally, I would budget this many tanks in one year, but there has been some deferred maintenance, but just the way it is.
Excuse, isn't the Nelson County, is that where we're putting our logo on that too?
Yes.
Is that part of this or is that...
Yes, that's part of this basically.
That includes that, okay.
Is our logo gonna be on all three? I'm sorry.
The Barstown Bourbon Capital of the World, that lettering, is going to be on the Nelson County Industrial Park Tank. And we're also putting that wording on the Withrow Tank for the visibility. Instead of just saying Barstown, it'll say our trademark. But we will have, the top will be kind of the same neutral tone and then the legs will be that blue, that navy style blue.
This whole idea of the logo was, you know, got started with the Bourbon Capital Community Alliance probably four years ago now. But so how it's evolved is the Boston Bourbon Company stepped forward, you know, a year or so ago and said they would like to sponsor the logo on the tank. Yeah, on the industrial park, which is close to Bluegrass Parkway. So since they've agreed to pay for it. And so we had worked with them several months ago and agreed to the logo at Barstown Bourbon Capital World without the colors and all that on that tank. That was kind of, you know, since they're sponsoring it, paying for it, we saw there was sort of a trade-off there that we agreed to go with that. And I think Jessica has some concerns on the larger tank. And I don't wanna speak for you, but the bigger tank, Allen Withrow Court, has a major pipe that comes off of it, I think, right?
Yes, the overflow pipe that comes off the tank kind of somewhat minimizes. You have to kind of be careful how you place that logo. And also the shape of that tank is a little different. It's a little more oval than shape. There's less flat surface, you know, vertical to place a logo. So, and again, trying to make sure that you've got your logo facing the most visible spot. So I'm definitely not, that's not my forte, but some of those things you were able to see just by driving around it from different viewpoints and trying to make that call on what logo type, you know, of our trademarks where it's gonna fit best and be best served, you know. And I think the, the way it looks, we may be able to utilize the same pattern that they used to actually paint the logo on the Nelson County Industrial Park Tank. Provided it doesn't get ripped or torn during that process, we'll be able to utilize that same template and utilize it to put the logo on the other tank. So we could at least save that pounds pattern cost if we're able to salvage it.
And I think our thought was, if you have the tank logo with the little colors, one of these ones, the ones that are kind of closer to the highways, like the one that's on 245 across from Beaux-Arts and behind the Nelson County Early Childhood Center, that one there and perhaps the other one off of Temple. Those are closer and also not as tall. And we think the color would be more visible and make a more better impression on those than these bigger ones.
Yeah, the Withrow Court Tank, when you're driving along Withrow Court Drive, it's such a tall tank that by the time you are able to see it and get up to it, you really can't see what's beyond that catwalk anyway. Your eyes really can't see that. So you're really, your eyes are really only able to see what you can see on 245 near the intersection of, say, Nutter Drive. You know, you can see that pretty well from there. But otherwise, your viewscape is kind of blocked.
So do you entertain a motion then for all three low bids on this then?
Yes, please, it's the councilman.
So we have, the Withrow Court bid would be to Currents Construction Company for $616,400. And then the Harding County Tank... And then the Harding County tank with the, also to Curran's for $84,850. And then the Nelson County Industrial Park tank, also to Curran's, Services LLC for $417,750. Ask for a motion then to approve the low bidder of Curran's for those three tanks?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve the low bid for the Withrow Court tank, Harding County tank and the Nelson County Industrial Park tank to Curran's Construction as the low bidder.
And we have a motion, my Councilman Dunn, we have a second. Second. Second, my Councilman Hibs, is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. All right, if you've had a chance to look at the minutes, if there's no corrections or additions, we can approve that by unanimous consent unless there's any corrections. Okay. Chief, I guess Chief Madley, call on you about the Fire Department Pet Program.
Yes, sir. I just want to bring y'all up to speed, a program we're going to start next week rolling out. We entertain, mostly we probably have pets at home, that they're like family members to you. Unfortunately, we get on the scene, no one tells, we don't know if pets inside the house. We search for them if possible, but you know, a pet can't answer our callouts to us and so forth. And also pets are like kids, they do hide when there's a fire in the house. So we're going to be rolling out this little program, this little sticker that you will place on your front door. It's for anybody that's inside the city limits of Barstown. And you just mark down if you have one dog, two dogs, one cat, a bird or other, and there are others. I know I had an experience one time where I was in an apartment fire and the guy had a five-foot alligator. So if you have an alligator, bear, cat over there. We will go around, put these up for people. So if you have anybody approaching says, hey, what's this all about and so forth, if you would, just send them our way. We'll take care of it.
When are you starting that?
Monday.
So how do you get a sticker? How does that work?
Just kind of either call the firehouse or come up to the firehouse. And we can either come and put it on your front door. I'll put them left side, down at the bottom of your front door. Generally, if you have a fire and your door burns away, that's the last part of the door that's still there and so forth. So even if there's a pretty good fire, when we get there, the stickers still be there and stuff.
Now, would this be the door, the storm door?
Preferably the storm door. Either one's fine. Cause we all have storm door too.
It's a great program, but you know, all these disasters we've seen here lately, you can see all kinds of stories about, you know, and you think about the people, but also there's a lot of animals that get caught up in these disasters and fires and silver flame.
I saw a news story last night where a dog was rescued from the hurricane that happened a week ago. He was rescued yesterday.
Thank you. Any other members of staff, anything to report?
No, sir.
City council members, y'all have anything to bring before us this evening? We have a one cemetery deed for Shirley Lytton. We can approve that by unanimous consent. And unfortunately, Councilman Sheckles is not here tonight, but we're going to recognize him for his award as Kentucky League of City Master of City Governance Award. I know the media's already had a story in the paper and other media, so we wanted to congratulate him for this recognition. You know, he's kind of a, he's a jokester sometimes. He said, you know, stick around long enough and something good's going to happen soon later. But he's been very active in KLC for many years, past president, and this award is recognizing his extensive training and work within the league and in city government. So very deserving. We're grateful to him and proud of him. So we're sorry he wasn't able to be here tonight. Since it was on the agenda, I didn't want to overlook it. The only other announcement I've got is just a little bit of a follow-up to our announcement a few weeks ago about the financial irregularities at the city hall. Tracy Hudson, who was previously our chief financial officer, is no longer employed at the city. I can't really comment much further than that because the investigation is still ongoing and has to do with these financial irregularities that we've discovered. I would like to reiterate though that all the funds that are in question or were in question have been accounted for at this time. So, but it is subject to our investigation and audit. So can't really report anything more than that until the audit and the investigation is complete. But I do want to give you all an update. Okay. That's all I have. Unless there's anything else, I entertain a motion for the government. So my, the motion, my Councilwoman Hart, we have a second.
Okay.
Then just Councilman Buckman. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Good luck, gentlemen.